Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November, I would say January 12th School Committee Meeting. And first of all, Happy New Year to everyone. We're now seeing you for the first time in the new year. So we hope you all had a nice turn of the new year and are moving ahead here as we get into 21. First on the agenda tonight is open public comment. And we have had two community inbox submissions since our last meeting. One was from Christine Angelini at Levin Leonard Place. And the second was from Carolyn O'Toole, 55 Alden Street. Those were both in the community inbox, as I've read to you since the beginning of the school year. We have also had a few other emails to school committee members over the same period of time as well. So, thank you. Next is the approval of minutes. Anyone out there in school committee seating land?
I actually had one clarification, and I should have looked it up. But on page two, the last bullet, the second to last sentence, it said Foxborough Educators Association? Is it educators or education?
Education.
Then with that one change, I'm good with the minutes. And if nobody has any other changes, I would make a motion to approve the minutes with that one. Amendment.
So moved. Seconded by Brent. So motion by Tina, seconded by Brent to approve the minutes from the December 22nd meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the December 22nd minutes? Aye. Thank you very much. Five zero. School committee vote. And by the way, I should probably mention that we have all five school committee members here today. So our votes will be taken in-house, in the room together. So thank you very much. And that makes our life a little bit easier when we're all sitting in the same room together. So next on the agenda is our teaching and learning highlights. I'm so excited for this one. Many years ago, I actually ran the Southeast District Music Festival myself. So this will be great to see some music students. Go ahead. Dr. Burdo, would you like to introduce everyone?
I sure would. So we have many students, along with Ms. Kami Tadoli, our Director of Music. And they are here this evening and going to share with us more information with exciting news about the outcome of the Southeast District Virtual Festival, being virtual this year. And so I'd like to welcome them, and we'll have them introduce themselves. And maybe I'll just turn it over to Ms. Tadoli first.
Thank you, everybody. Happy New Year. It's nice to see you. I'm not going to spend too much time talking, because I'm going to let the students talk to you about the festival. But I will say that I did have a chance to pop in this weekend to some of the virtual rehearsals. And it just seemed like a really well-run and just fantastic opportunity for our students. I know I spoke to many of them about it, although they wished it could have been in person. But to them, this seemed like the next best thing. So I asked the students to tell you a little bit about the audition process, how they got into it, how, what they learned this weekend, and the people that they got to interact with. And the silver lining through all of this is they got to interact with some fantastic people from really all over the country, which is really cool. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves. And then, students, if you can, you know, maybe one of you from each ensemble could tell us who your conductors were and where they were from as well. That would be really excellent. So let's start with, where's Maggie McCullough? We're going to start with you.
Hi, I'm Maggie McCullough. I play the violin in the orchestra. And something that I learned from this whole process that was, I think, really important, was how to both audition and film the recording in a semi-professional way. We had to really follow all the rules exactly, turn it in on time. And we really needed to learn how to take numerous takes, so we could get our best performance, but not take too many takes. That it was just overwhelming and too much and too stressful.
All right. Hello, my name is Emma Lacy, and I played alto saxophone in the district jazz band. Similar to what Maggie said, the audition process was very different from typical years. I took place in the in-person festival for the past three years. So this was a really new experience for me. For one thing, it kind of helped me get my technology brain together, you know, how to set up an external microphone, how to set up a webcam, and how to make sure your background's all set and everything. That was something that is a helpful skill that I feel like this kind of gave us. Additionally, in jazz, you know, you have to improvise for your audition. And so, you know, as Maggie said, you get a lot of takes, and you can make mistakes in them and find the best ones. But for me, as an improviser, that gave me many different takes that weren't all the same, because improvising is on the spot. And so it gave me a lot of creative freedom in this audition process. And as for the festival itself, the jazz band got to work with Mark White, who is a professor of guitar at Burgley. And he was just fantastic to learn from. He gave multiple master classes on improvisation and his experiences as a touring musician and teacher. And something I didn't really expect from the festival was the little community that it made. You know, I thought we weren't really going to get to know each other with not as much time as the typical one, and not seeing each other in person. But from the start, the directors and the conductors made it very clear that they wanted this to be a relaxed environment. We didn't, they didn't want us to be hesitant to ask questions or to just start conversations. And so it was just a very relaxed setting while still maintaining professionalism. And overall, I was very happy to meet some great new musicians and hear them play. And I'm very thankful that the festival was able to still run, even if it was virtual. I definitely still got something out of it, and I'm sure the rest of the students can agree.
Thank you, Emma. Dominic, why don't you go and tell us about the band?
My name's Dominic, and I play French horn. And I got into the band this year. And the band was a really unique experience. I was like, at first, I went in there, I'm like, oh, it's going to be virtual, like, oh, I want to sit at my computer again for like months. But actually, I had a lot of fun there. We met someone, met some really cool trombonists named Christopher Bill. Highly recommend you guys check him out. And overall, that's something I enjoyed about the festival a lot. It was very different from normal. But as you've learned from this year, everything is, so why not? You know, it was an empty canvas for what they were going to do with this festival. And I think they did a pretty good job with it. Also met some really good, the Army Field Band came in, too. Met a really cool French horn player. Like, I enjoyed meeting him, learning a lot from him, and I became probably a better player, which is surprising. You know, musicians are like, oh, you don't get better through virtual, but I thought I did. And yeah, that was probably the most unique experience I had.
Thanks, Dominic. How about you, Maya?
Hi, I'm Maya. I was an alto in the district choir. So the festival experience was definitely unique to other years. While I was a little bummed I couldn't sing with everyone in person, I'm so grateful that I even got the chance to sing with my peers, because I hadn't been singing in a choir since March. And it really helped me to realize how much I had missed singing in the choir, and what a big part of my life it was. I really love this festival. One of my favorite parts was actually when the composers of the pieces that we were singing actually joined the call, and we were able to ask questions about the pieces, and we were able to analyze the poetry that they selected to be the lyrics of the pieces, which was so cool and really insightful.
Thanks, Maya. How about you, Amelia?
Hi, I'm Amelia, and I played cello in the district orchestra. And I definitely agree with everything that's been said. I think there were a lot of valuable skills that we learned that we'll probably have to keep using amid the pandemic, as we keep taking musical opportunities. And I thought it was really great that the festival was able to continue even online. Like Maya, it's really something that I look forward to every year. At the orchestra, I got to work with Maestro Correto Yanez, who works with the New England Conservatory Youth Orchestra. And not only did he provide a lot of insight to the music we were playing, we did a recording project of Mozart's iconic Einig Klinik Nacht music. We also got to learn a lot about classical music and that time period, and Mozart as a composer. So the whole thing was very insightful. And I think it's really important to learn not only about the notes and the rhythms that you're playing, but where they came from. And also, we got to do a workshop with the famous rock violinist, Mark Wood, who taught us a lot about, similar to that, but in a different respect, about a lot of different types of music. He, of course, is a rock musician, but he has an extensive classical background, and he loves playing music from different cultures. It reminds me of the lessons that we had of Mr. Albro during our Wednesday meetings at school. And it was overall, like, really informative and fun overall, and I was still able to make friends, which was really nice. So I just really appreciated that it was able to happen, and they still got a really great faculty and a really great set of professionals that were able to give us this experience.
Thank you. How about you, Mary Claire?
Hi, I'm Mary Claire Ernst, and I played oboe in the district band. And I think definitely my favorite part of this experience was the guests that were invited to join us. And Dr. LaPrade, who works at TCNJ, he's a director there, he was in charge of the band, and he invited Kate Nishimura, who was one of the composers of one of our pieces that we played. And we got to ask her all sorts of questions about the piece. And lots of people asked about the background of the piece. And we got to learn about Kate's background, which also is related to the background of the movement of the piece we were playing, which is called Naze. And it's about just this national park that used to be a Japanese internment camp, and just the emotion behind that piece. And it was so, it was so incredible to hear from a composer who's a woman and of Japanese Canadian descent. It was just amazing to have some variety in the composers that we played. And yeah, it was an amazing experience.
Thank you. Alec?
Hello, I'm Alec, and I played French horn in the district band this year. So obviously, this year was definitely challenging, especially because, you know, music is such an in-person event. But I thought they did a very good job of making it, you know, inclusive for everyone, making it interesting. And one of my favorite parts was being able to talk with J.G. Miller, who was a horn player in the Army Field Band. And his career was just fascinating to me. He had one of the most interesting careers I've ever heard of. He played, he went on tour with U2, I guess, and he has been able to play on movie sets. So I thought it was really interesting to be able to learn from him and to just see, you know, everything that he's been able to do is very inspiring for me.
Let's see. Liam Ernst?
Hi, I'm Liam. And I played snare drum in the district band. And one of the cool things that I feel was cool that we got to do was really sort of dive into the composers of the two pieces we played. Played a piece by Leonard Bernstein, and of course, one by Kate Nishimura. And of course, Kate is still alive, so we did get to, like, actually talk with her and sort of get some of her mindset when she was composing. But with Bernstein, who is deceased, we sort of dove into his past and his composition and his sort of background and really sort of understand him as a composer, so we could, you know, better play his piece. So that was something I thought was pretty cool, and it's not usually something we get to do. So something neat we get to do in this online environment.
Liam, how about you, Cooper?
Hi, I'm Cooper, and I was a bass in the senior district choir. And like everyone said, the audition process was really different and kind of unique to everything that I've experienced before when auditioning for districts. But one of the most unique experiences I had, like Maya said, we got to meet both composers of both of our pieces that we did. And I think that it was really cool that we got to do such contemporary new music that was written just in the last few years by really young composers. And we really got to, really got to hear from them about what composing was like, what process they took, and their backgrounds, too. So I think it was really cool to sing new music, because I think it's really refreshing. And yeah, it was just a really cool process overall.
Thanks, Cooper. Samantha?
Hi, I'm a cello in the senior district orchestra. And I think something that the audition process taught me that I most valued, and the festival as a whole, was how with it being virtual, we had to submit recordings instead of actually doing things in person and live. And that meant you could do multiple takes. And so whenever you play that take back, you're going to hear something that you don't like, something that you wish you could improve. And so you have to learn to be okay with mistakes and imperfection. I really think that this virtual district taught me how to be okay with mistakes and mess-ups. On top of that, I also really loved how Mark Wood, a rock violinist, was able to teach us and give us a workshop. Something I really felt I learned from him was how it's not about playing, it's not, you're not the instrument you play, you are the musician, and how it's important to really know why you're playing the music you're playing.
Thank you, Samantha. How about you, Mabel?
Hi, my name is Mabel Link, and I played French horn in the district band this year. And like Dominic, I was kind of skeptical about how, like, interesting and, like, what use and information that the virtual festival is going to give me. But it was actually really interesting, and I was pleasantly surprised. One of my favorite parts was how many guests that we were able to have, where we met people that we wouldn't be able to meet otherwise. And we had one guest named Cameron Leach, who was a really great percussionist. And he put together a video of all these really interesting percussion pieces. And one of the pieces that he showed us was, like, using the French language. And I thought that was really interesting and something that I wouldn't have really known about otherwise. So that's something that I learned.
Thank you, Mabel. And last, Granja.
Hi, I'm Granja. I play the violin. And obviously, this year was really different compared to other years, but it was nice to have reason to learn new music. And the orchestra's guest speaker, Mark Wood, it was nice to see how passionate he was about what he did and give hope.
And that's it. That was everyone that's here. And I don't know if the school committee has any questions for them, but I'm proud of everything that they did to get to where they are. And it sounds like it was just a fantastic weekend for all.
Any questions?
No questions, really. I just want to comment on how well-spoken all of the students are, and their positivity and their willingness to embrace something very different from a musical perspective. And, you know, it's not the same thing that they're used to. And, but they had a great experience, and they just told us. I brought tears to my eyes sitting here. And it's just, I appreciate you coming and sharing your experience with us, all of you. Thank you.
I just have a question. I was going to, just in listening to everybody, I'm really impressed with how well you're taking the turn of that this is virtual and trying to learn from that. And I was just wondering if, and if you have thought about, okay, next year, if they have this, hopefully they'll have this live, are there things from the virtual that you'd want to see them continue to do? You know, what good things would you want them to keep or continue on in the future? Don't mean to put anybody in the
Anyone can answer. Go ahead, just speak up. Anyone can answer. You don't have to hit your mute button, just go.
I can share. So like I said, I definitely enjoyed the input that we received from the composers of the music. So I think that it'll be really interesting to see in future years that are in person, at least just like a note from the composer that maybe will explain the background behind the piece, or analyzing the poetry or lyrics of it a little. So just like a note of that, or if we could, still do like a video call with them. I don't know if that would be possible, but yeah, definitely just interact with the composers.
Thank you.
I think also, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think also getting to work with professional musicians from really all over the country. During our lunch session, we had a Q and A with some music students from all across the country, some professional musicians, even a luthier, who is somebody who makes string instruments. So it was really, and I know that we definitely wouldn't have had those speakers if it had been in person and it had been somewhere in the southeastern districts. So I think that's something that's really valuable that we can take advantage of now, is getting to work with people from all over the country. And I know that Foxborough has done that. I know that they've done some master classes with some professional musicians. I know the jazz band especially. And I think that that really just opens a lot more doors and can allow us to make a lot more connections with people who, like Maya said, can bring really special insight. Additionally, I think just a little taste of music technology is something new this year that I had never really learned of before this year. In the pandemic, I have seen a lot of professional musicians that I look up to start to create music in their home studios and their basements. And that's something that I've been trying to teach myself more of, and I definitely did get a little more information on it from this festival. And even after the pandemic, music technology is always going to be very relevant and something that a lot of musicians are going to turn to as it becomes more and more accessible. So I think in the coming years, as the festivals do start to turn in person again, I still think that's something that I would love to learn more about. And I'm very grateful that I got to learn a little bit about it this year.
Can I just, I follow up on that? And I just want to commend you all for reaching out and doing something different. It definitely sounded like doing the auditions in a different way, not live, can be a challenge as well as an advantage. And so thank you very much for stretching the boundaries a little bit, and keep focusing on the positive things that you learned from this experience. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, I got to ask a question, because I'm just dying, because I can't figure this out. So could anyone explain to me how, if you rehearsed, how a rehearsal went? It's just killing me, because I can't, I can't see it. Having been a conductor myself for years, I just don't see it yet. So I'd love someone, go ahead, I see a hand up there. Please, go.
So I know in the orchestra, what we did was, so the conductor shared a practice track. It was actually a practice track from an orchestra that he had conducted. And everyone was muted and played along with it. And he gave feedback based on what he could see, like bows and fingerings. He also could give feedback based on what he had experienced from previously conducting the piece, like, oh, people generally play this out of tune, make sure you're playing it in tune. It wasn't ideal, but we made it work. And so you could play along with people virtually. So it was, I'm very glad that people were able to make it work.
How about improv? Did you do live improv?
A little bit. So I bet typically, this is my first year taking part in the senior jazz band, I bet there probably would have been some sort of jam session or improv altogether, collective improvisation it's called. We did not have, we were not able to play together, which I think was the main thing, as you noted. You can't have students all playing at once because of the delay of Zoom and feedback and all that fantastic parts of technology that we love on Zoom. But, you know, you're able to share your sound on Zoom, so someone would share their sound, play a backing track on YouTube and play along. So although we didn't get to play together, we still got to hear each other play. You know, improv is very personal, so you get to hear ideas from different students that you wouldn't meet otherwise outside of Foxborough. And we gave each other feedback and complimented each other's playing. And even though you weren't able to play together, they definitely made the best of a bad situation, and we still definitely got something out of it.
Thank you.
That's great.
I feel better now. I now understand. I was lost. I'm like, where's the rehearsal? So I got it. So that's great. Well, I just want to, I want to thank you all for taking the time tonight to talk about your experiences. I certainly want to also commend you for, Michelle was alluding to it, seeing the, I'll say, the silver lining in the opportunity. But what the silver lining in that opportunity obviously was, and you all articulated very effectively, that great, unique opportunity when the composer can actually look you in the eye and say, here is why, here is what I was thinking. Or a great French horn player to say, here's how I express this and do this. And those are great things that you don't necessarily get in that two or three-day Southeast District Festival, because you can't bring all those parties in. So I think it was a great alternative for them. And I'm glad you all recognized that and saw that silver lining. So congratulations. Really well done. Congratulations for all the effort and the years of effort that you've put in just to get to this point.
I just continue to be so impressed by our students. I mean, you've said it already, they're just phenomenal in articulating the experience and being so grateful for the experience that they had. And at the same time, what really was resonating with me and listening to what they were talking about is the cultural piece. When we think about what we're trying to do within our own curriculum and for them to continue and have that expanded with their experience, and then I also would just like to congratulate all of them, because it is to be able to, somebody had said it was a blank canvas. And it really is. It's a very different experience, and what you take from this will definitely stick with you as you go forward. And at the same time, I'd like to just do a shout-out to our music staff, because they have really, you talk about being nimble and flexible and what they've done, you know, where there's chorus singing outside up until it was too cold, and all of the different guidelines that they're having to follow. It really just shows the resilience of our staff and of our students. So thank you to all of our staff and students, and congratulations. And thanks so much for just really representing Foxborough so well, as you always do.
Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. Well done. Job well done.
And I know Ms. Tadoli will be staying with us, too.
Thank you, thank you so much for having us.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Well, next, we'll go on to our next item, agenda. Everyone good? Great. That was, that was wonderful. That was wonderful. Next on our agenda is our program, the High School Program of Studies proposals. And I know that our principal, Diana Myers-Packler, is here to lead the way. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Diana, want to start? Yeah.
Oops. Okay, I'm going to turn up volume.
Great, we can hear you well. Thank you.
Okay, good. And if I get a little glitchy, I'm sorry. I won't be long. But again, hats off, as Superintendent Burdo said, our, hats off to our music department and our music students. And again, just, they do a marvelous job. We're amazed by them all the time. They're part of the reason why we keep doing what we're doing every single day, all of our students, actually. The resiliency and their participation in this was just so exciting. I digress, I'm sorry, but Happy New Year to all of you. And it does not quite seem possible that here we are, it's Program of Studies night. It's a night that I always find to be very exciting. We have a staff that's continuously looking to keep our students engaged and to really meet their needs. And, you know, thus, we propose, or our teachers propose, new classes almost every year as a way to upgrade, update, and meet the interests of our students. So without taking much more time, I'm going to turn this over to Laureen White, who is our Director of Guidance. And we have quite a number of teachers and department heads who are here who will be presenting just a little bit and be able to, a little bit of the new programs potentially, and also to answer any of your questions. So Laureen?
Hi, everybody. Here we are again. So our Program of Studies is, you know, I present it to you every year, and it's pretty much the same. There's a few changes always. We had a couple changes in the very beginning of the booklet, just because we now have Corey with us. And so he is in a couple of the federal laws and so forth, and Karen McKinnon. So we had to replace a couple of those. But other than that, the bulk of the book is very similar to what it's been every year. Like Mrs. Myers-Packler said, it's amazing, for such a small school, how many courses we do offer. Because we do try to have something for every kind of learner. We have a lot of hands-on learners, and then students went to college prep, honors, AP classes. So we do try to run a variety, so everybody has something that sparks their interest. And we do try out different courses pretty much every year. This year, we have more than usual, which is great. So we always try to offer different courses to see what the students want, because it's all about the students. So we will go over a couple things. Mrs. Fischera couldn't be with us tonight, but she is going to be offering a new course. And hopefully, everybody has their new course description with you in the Program of Studies. But she's offering a new course called Events Planning, okay, which looks really exciting. It's for the, for the upper-level students, you know, 10 through 12. And it's really for, like, event you know, 10 through 12. And it's really for event planning. Because we found that a lot of students has sparked an interest in that. So she's going to run that class and see where that goes. And then we have, you know, a whole bunch of other classes, and I'll let them talk about it. So let's just start, it's on both page 21 and page 60. It is a course called The Art and Social Justice. So it's located in the program studies in two different places because it's with Kelly Akashia and Kami Tidoldi. So if you guys want to say anything about that, you can?
Yeah, I can speak up. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight and the opportunity to introduce these new classes. As teachers, we're always looking for ways to meet students where they're at. So this is a really good course for that. We have a lot of students who want to have meaningful conversations. And this is a really great course for that. So it's The Arts in Social Justice. The main question behind this course is how the arts, which include music and art, how artists have used their platform to confront social justice and to affect positive change. We think that the arts are a great way, a great accessible tool for students to have these meaningful conversations. So Kami had come to me and proposed this course. I love the idea of it. Both of our mentors, Jerry Roy and Steve Massey, had run a course that was very successful before, The Arts in Western Culture. And I think this is a great course for us to have today. Like I said, I think students are looking for that space to have meaningful conversations. So it is a half year course, and it is open to students of all grades. Kami, do you want to?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Thank you, Kelly. Again, we were looking for, you know, the music department offers a lot of performance-based courses, including other electives like guitar and piano, but nothing that really sort of serves the sort of greater community, community. And again, we had the Arts of the Western Culture course way back in the day. But this, as Kelly said, we really feel like meet the needs of our students and the current climate and their interests. And then fascinatingly, I've been just talking with colleagues at some of the local colleges and just specifically MIT. And Dr. Harris, who's one of the music professors there, is actually running a course very similar with some of his colleagues at MIT. And he had even said, let's do some collaboration. So how cool, I think, would this opportunity be for our students to take this class and then have this open door of opportunities for collaborations with, you know, and tapping into the resources we certainly have at the secondary level as well. So I'm excited. I'm excited to work with the art department and to have this opportunity for our students.
And all these courses that we're presenting tonight are all half-year course electives. So I just wanted to bring that out. So we have a different cluster this year, too. We grouped it as humanities, sorry, humanities. And we have a lot of different courses. And we asked Janelle to be here because a lot of them are in her department. So I don't know if she just wants to give an overview of the different courses, because there is a huge gamut of them. But Janelle, do you want to do an overview? And then if anybody has anything to add?
Yes, sure. So the wellness department is proposing three courses this year. We've been talking about offering full-time electives for a while now and kind of tossing around ideas on what we think there is an interest in or a need for to offer variety for students in kind of the wellness arena outside of the gym. So as a staff, we discussed, and some of my teachers came up with some ideas, things that they have a passion for that they think students would also be interested in and benefit from. So the three courses that we're offering are Sports Media, Leadership in Service Learning, and then Sports and Society. So Sports Media, CJ Neely is going to be offering that course. And what he would like to do is have students do a lot of research in different media types and then pick a sports team that they're interested in and sort of become a beat reporter for their team of choice. So then each week, they will be responsible for coming up with a different type of media product to report out on their team and then bring that to the school community through either podcasts or webinars or online or a newspaper or all different types of things, kind of based on what the students are interested in and kind of let them lead their way a little bit. The Leadership in Service Learning is, John Gibbs is interested in doing that. He wants to give students an opportunity to become leaders in the school and the community. So what he would like to do is have students create community service projects within the building and then also come up with a community service project that they are going to work on and make a connection within the community. And he has a lot of connections through the YMCA. So he's really excited to kind of tap into that and then have some community leaders come in and present to the students in class while teaching them leadership skills that they can use over the course of their life. Teresa Petty is going to offer a sports, would like to offer a Sports and Society class, kind of like a sports anthropology thing. There's a lot going on in society right now. And looking at it through a sports lens is a really interesting way to kind of pull kids in and get them to look at a lot of the difficult topics that are going on right now in society. CJ and Teresa are here. So if anyone has any questions or if they want to jump in and add anything more specific, they can.
And just to let you know, those begin on page 45 in the program studies. If you want to see the exact description of that, I forgot to mention that. I apologize.
I'll just jump in quickly, Janelle. No, I basically came, the idea of this was from a friend of mine who does it in another school district that told me he had done it as a unit during this COVID time of trying to find ways to have his phys ed students be active and still be involved. It's actually a team sports class that they did at his school. And this idea came from him, and he kind of ran with it. So the kids really enjoyed it. And I thought, why not take it to the next step? I think it would be awesome. You know, I think as far as the research portion, I think it's an educational class. But in addition, I think when you get kids passionate about something, that many of the kids are about their sports teams, you can get into all different areas and avenues that maybe you know you wouldn't tap in in a traditional educational setting. Maybe they wouldn't be as interested in. I know I'm taking Spanish class right now. I know the kids, I want to learn Spanish, but maybe they're not as excited. But, you know, I'm someone that loved sports growing up. I want to follow everything. I want to absorb everything I see in the media. And now I could take that, that research I find and then create products of my own. So like Janelle mentioned, you know, podcasts was one idea of kind of hosting a show, you know, starting out maybe more of like covering the game and going like a basic reporting of the game. But then, you know, during class, having them research different press conferences, issues within the team, and having like weekly reports they have to turn in to me, as well as, you know, I do have some connections with sports media with, you know, Ryan Lanigan at Hawk Sports. I've kind of preliminary discussed with him about getting involved and talking about what it's like to cover the local sports. Mike Lockhart's a producer of The Toucher and Rich Show at 98.5. They both agreed to be a part of this in some way. And I think just bringing them in even just to talk to the kids, well, what you would have to do to get in this type of career would be a cool way to, you know, just spark some interest. So hopefully it works out.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you. And so we have one more course, too, that I just want to bring in. So it is on page 81 in the booklet. So it's woodworking three. Billy Ivic is going to teach that. And so what we found out is that a lot of students exhausted the woodworking electives, you know, maybe after one year or one and a half year. And so he's willing to go the next level. So Billy, do you want to talk a little bit about the wood three?
Sure. So yeah, the wood three is a, it's a great opportunity again for a lot of students, kind of pulling the students that just, you know, that have been through the class. A lot of them had mentioned that they, like Laureen said, that they've kind of exhausted their opportunity to kind of come back into the wood shop. Woodworking is something that you can continue to learn, you know, as a lot of things throughout your life. There's so many different techniques when it comes to, you know, different things like joining and things are always changing as far as technology goes in woodworking as well. I know stretch codes is a big thing where it's kind of talking about like energy efficiencies in homes. Engineering's always changing. The building codes, you know, electronics and technology is a big part of building homes and kind of being a part of woodworking as well. And again, there's all sorts of different types of complex cabinetry making and furniture out there. So for the students to be involved in another class or to further their education in this, in this field, it's a good opportunity for them to, to learn and grow. And again, the more you do something, as everybody knows, the better you'll be at a certain, you know, trade or, you know, different things you can learn in class. So I think it's a great opportunity to kind of keep on expanding. And we do have the interest, which is great.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. And being, you know, we're comprehensive high school. We really try to do a lot of hands-on classes. And sometimes we're limited. And it's so great to, every time when we come up with a new idea, if, you know, we always get the support of the students. And if you guys, we do appreciate that. Because some, some students, that is the way that they learn best is the hands-on. So we're excited about that. Does anybody have any questions for these people in terms of their new electives?
Thank you. Michelle does. Michelle Rehman.
I do. Leadership in Service is that kind of one project that the whole class sort of decides together to pursue? Or is it individuals that are in the class are pursuing individual type projects?
Individuals in the class or in small groups would be pursuing the projects.
Okay. Interesting. Okay.
And these are new, sometimes they just develop as the year goes on and depending on the students that sign up for the class. So I do think that that was a really good question because, you know, again, we want the students to do what they're interested in, not be told what service or, you know, volunteerism to do. We want them to take the initiative.
Great. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And I'd just like to point out, too, you heard a lot about what are student interests? And that's one of our focuses, is what is it that they're bringing forward being college and career ready? And so you see that within these courses. At the same time, when you go back to what you approved our district strategy for improvement, and we look under our strategy, which is providing, it's under academic excellence, it's rigorous, it's relevant, and it's responsiveness. And I think these are all great examples of that with each of these courses. When we look at specifically that objective, I just, I would like to remind everyone, because this is, we're going back to this constantly, provide opportunities for educators to work together. You saw that with, when we look about the collaboration, particularly in art and music, to offer differentiated and advanced learning through curriculum experiences that are rigorous, relevant, and responsive to students' needs. And then specifically, when we go down to two of our strategic areas of focus, continue to refine our curriculum and school practices and activities with specific emphasis on ensuring culturally sensitive and responsive lessons, practices, and activities. So when you think about the social justice, the leadership, and service learning, as well as continuing to refine our curriculum with specific emphasis on maximizing curriculum opportunities for real-world connections and relevance. And all of those that are presented as new opportunities are responsive to student needs, and they are focused on what's relevant in society and looking toward opportunities that are going to also be focused on college and career ready.
Any further questions from the committee members?
Just more of a comment. I'm delighted to see that the woodworking program is expanding. I wholeheartedly agree with all of your rationale. Plus, you have a nice shot. And if you have student interest, so let's use it. And if you can, if you build it, they will come. So I'm grateful to you and your students for expanding that interest because kids from all over the academic spectrum can benefit from that type of learning.
I just love the variety of new courses, new course offerings that we're seeing tonight. You know, there's really something for every student here on this page. And these are great opportunities and wonderful teachers who are willing to step up and do something a little different than, you know, we've seen in the past. So this is great. I think it's fantastic.
I'm going to pipe up just for one minute. I really do think that it does show our staff is really being a staff that's continuously learning and wanting to grow themselves. And when you hear, you know, as Dr. Burdo said, this is such a crossover and really interdisciplinary learning that's going on, both among the teachers who are willing to expand out and for the students to be able to come in. So once again, we're just so excited about, about each of these. And we're hoping that they will, you know, have courses or will have full courses that can run come fall. But if not, we can definitely see them on the books as something that's going to be in and very relevant. It's things that our students have been talking about and really have been asking about. And so finally coming to fruition in so many different ways. So again, my hats are off to, to our staff and faculty and to all of you, too. Thank you, school committee, for your support as well.
I have a question either for you or for Diana. Any concerns for staffing by addition or subtraction? You know, sometimes you add courses and there's a flow. So I'm pretty comfortable, Diane. I know what the flow is in high schools, but I just wanted to make sure we-
This is within our staffing. So it's if this, if this course runs, another course does not run.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for saying that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Do we need a motion to approve the program of studies?
I think we do.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the Foxborough High School Program of Studies for 2020, 2022 school year.
Motion by Tina?
Second.
Second by Brent again. We have a motion and a second for the program of studies for 2122. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? I see five hands in the air. That's a 5-0 vote. Thank you very much. Thank you all for attending tonight. And it has already been said by numerous people, thanks for stepping up and being creative for the benefit of our students. And in particular, being creative for semester courses, because I know there's a puzzle that goes into building a high school schedule. And so being able to pull those semester courses in with interesting content for our students is huge. So thanks so much for stepping up. Really do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was great. That's wonderful. See, the opportunities for our students, right? Remember when your kids would hit, when, as our kids have hit high school, they'd open up the program of studies? Like, oh, I can do so much, right? Which is really cool, right? And these just add to that. That's really great.
I think the hardest part is going to be deciding what to take from the students because they have so many opportunities.
Isn't that always, it's always the challenge that like, I want to do this. And well, you can't do it all today.
Right.
It takes some time.
Kiara wants to not graduate this year. Just, right?
Are you going to come back?
All the, um, great. I wish I could take one of them.
Definitely. So next on our agenda is superintendent's update. Dr. Burdo.
All right. So I have four updates this evening. The first one is on MCAS. And we have learned recently that MCAS is still on with the Department of Education. And that is something we were waiting to see if it was going to take place. We have learned that it is going to take place. And the rationale from the Department of Education is that they see it as a crucial diagnostic tool that's going to promote success for educational equity. And they are committed to administering the MCAS this spring. They also are saying that they recognize that there needs to be flexibility and adjustments. And with that said, they are going to modify a number of things. They're modifying the competency determination for students. That has to do with, we know that students have to pass the MCAS in order to graduate. That's a competency determination. So for example, if you had a student that had not passed the science portion, and they were in a course in the equivalent, we can have a competency determination that we can apply for if, if we needed that, for a student that had not yet earned the competency determination. The other part is that they're going to shorten the MCAS testing time for grades three to eight. It's going to be cut significantly as far as reducing the testing time. And the way that they're going to do that is that they will have each student take only a portion of the MCAS in each of the subjects. So that modified administration of it, they're, they're saying that, you know, that will still preserve the reliability and the validity of the assessment and will provide an opportunity to be meaningful and diagnostic for purposes. We know that although we're in a very different school year, we are still accountable to all of the state standards for the curriculum frameworks. And I know there's been questions, how do you do that if you're in person half the time, if you're home and you're remote, and what does that look like? We are still accountable to all of the standards. You know, we're really fortunate in that we have experienced teachers and that they know their curriculum really well. And any given year, making adjustments to some of the things that maybe take longer with some classes or where they spend more time in their curriculum versus where they spend less time, that happens every year. This is a year where it's even that much more and significant, but where we have teachers that work so well and collaborate with each other. And that makes a big difference for them and their curriculum as far as with students. But at the same time, I think it's important to state that we- students, but at the same time, I think it's important to state that we are still accountable to all of the state standards. There will be accountability relief from the Department of Education, and what this means, any districts that were, um, deemed underperforming, that's not Foxborough, but that's an example, that they will not, um, hold any schools that are chronically underperforming districts, they will not, uh, deem any new districts that way based on the results. The other part is they're going to extend the access testing window, the access is the, um, state assessment for any of our English language learners, that typically is a window of time where they're assessed, and that ends in February, they're extending that through May, and the last part is on the MCAS biology test, providing flexibility for test-taking, um, for the first time in June, instead of waiting and offering it just in February, so, there's a lot more information that will come out by school level when the time comes, but at this point in time, the message is, MCAS is still taking place, and, um, that'll be interesting to see when the scheduling of that happens in the spring.
Dr. Berdus, um, is that for current third and eighth graders in high school, like 10th graders, or is it for the, for the students that might have, did we do MCAS last year for the 10th graders in the-
We did not have MCAS last year.
Which is what I thought, right, um, but is it gonna be retro for those students?
Yes, so originally, we had talked about how we were going to have testing in January, and then testing again in the spring, but now they took away the January window, unless it was a senior and needed it for competency determination, and that's being moved to the spring, at the same time, we'll wait and see what happens, I mean, this is at this point in time-
Right.
-the information that's coming out.
Okay.
The second update that I have here is on athletics, and that is our winter sports season has begun, um, as a district, I will say that, you know, we're, we're really thankful that we're able to have a winter sports season, and our athletes are playing, there's many districts that have chosen not to have winter sports, there are many that have chosen to delay the start of winter sports, or they've had to press pause based on what's taking place, and, um, with, with that said, I, I also think it's really important to, to really state that the decision to have winter sports was not one that we took lightly, but we do know how important it is for our athletes and all of the things that athletics bring to our students, we also know that there's been questions and conversations from us making the decision not to have spectators at winter sports, that again, is a difficult decision to make as a district, um, in many regards, and then, at the same time, it's not when we look at what is our primary goal, and our goal is education and the academics, to keep students in school, so we have met multiple times with our, uh, local health department, with our athletic department, with our administration, with our athletic trainers, and the decision that we came to is based on, what are we doing for students right now, and where are the adjustments that we're having to make, and what we're not able to do, and with that said, to have spectators at sports, it's not just about the cleaning, we are cleaning between each of the games, it's not just about the contact tracing, which is definitely, um, takes a lot of, a lot of time on our staff, it, I can tell you quite honestly, with contact tracing, it's happening all weekend with any of the cases, we, we have not seen evidence of transmission in schools, but I do think that that's very much from our faculty and our staff, and our custodial staff, everyone, the due diligence and everything that we're doing to mitigate risk in school, and our numbers in Foxborough are continuing to grow, we're up over two hundred cases in Foxborough as of this morning, I talked with Deputy, um, Chief Kinven, and, you know, one of the comments that he said, that's who's responding when they're doing their conversations, not everyone is willing to talk, so there's, you know, most likely, many more cases than that, but they're growing every week, Foxborough is now in the red, because our positivity rate is just under six percent, so all of this data, and looking at what's happening or what's not happening in schools, it really are, it's along with many factors in making the decision that we had, and when we think about the things that are also not happening in school, just everything you heard with music, concerts, that, we don't have anyone being able to be at concerts, our drama, the production at the middle school, it was virtual, no one was able to be there either, when we think about all of the other opportunities that are not taking place in schools, um, for activities, but at the same time, when we go back to our educational program, we do not have parents coming in for individual education program, for evaluation, for IEP meetings, those are all virtual, for 504 meetings, so that's part of our academic program, that's all virtual, so, with that said, with the positivity rate that we have, with the number of cases that we have, with trying to mitigate and control whatever we can within our environment, um, we're trying to protect our instructional programs and to have students in school, we're very thankful that we have not had to go out fully remote at this point in time, I know that there were many that thought by the second week of school in September, or other schools that started off fully remote and started hybrid, we are thankful every day to have our students in person as much as we can, so, with that said, um, we're gonna continue to meet with our local health officials, we will continue to look at the data and our numbers, and we're always reflecting on our safety, um, protocols that we have in place, making decisions and adjustments when we need to, um, clearly, this is a year where we've had to be extremely flexible and pivot at, at many times, and be ready to continue to pivot when that's necessary, so, we're thankful that we're able to have a mechanism at this point in time for parents and community members to see through Foxborough Cable Access with everything being livestreamed, thankful to the volunteers that continue to work with Foxborough Cable in order to be able to bring the live streaming with all of the games, have also received, you know, emails from parents that say, thank you for the live streaming and being able to do that for our students, so, at this time, as the numbers continue to rise, we look at, um, those active cases, we're, we're not at a point where we want to, um, really make any decisions that are different from where we are at this point in time based, based on that, we still don't know the extent of the holidays, to be quite honest, and with cases that are going to be there, we, we want to slow the spread in the community and not bring it in to the schools, so, again, we will continue to review, meet with local health officials, um, about what's taking place as far as our cases, and we'll adjust any decisions in the future accordingly. Any questions or comments before moving on to the third update?
I would just say, it's not really a question, it's more of a comment, is that I fully appreciate the frustration that parents have of not being able to see their kids in person, I completely understand that frustration, and it's very much a frustration that we're all feeling, there's so much that has been lost and is gonna continue to be lost, um, because of all of this that's going on, and, um, but like you just said, is that we have to focus in on what's the main goal, and the main goal is the kids and being in school, and them actually being able to play the game, um, 'cause I can see, if it continues to rise, there may be a point in time when then those games have to be stopped, and nobody wants that, nobody wants that, so it's, the unfortunate piece is always trying to balance, so, um, we feel the pain, that's just-
Yeah, I, I think you're absolutely right, we all understand the frustration that parents are feeling, and, and wish it could be different, I don't think there's anyone in this room who doesn't wish this entire year was different than it is right now, but we have to make the best of the situation we have, and we have to make the right decisions for Foxborough, not for any other town in the Hakamak League, but for our town, and we're basing them on the advice of our public health officials, and to do anything differently would just be irresponsible, in my opinion.
Well, I, I, just importantly, I think that what you pointed out, Dr. Berdus, is that it's not just athletics, it's any type of interaction where family, friends, were able to go and enjoy the work that the student had been putting in, so-
Right.
Um, and it is ultimately about the entire student, entire school population, not about the students participating in whatever that particular program is.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I, I feel for all of the, the chorus, the band, all of those who are not going to be able to play with, most likely, as far as we can tell right now, play with their, um, bandmates and sing with their chorus mates again-
Mm-hmm.
-in their school careers, and that, that's not something that we can change right now, um, and it's across the board, so, it, it's a sad thing that we're having to deal with, but it's coming to an end, hopefully.
And they are getting to play their sports.
That's where I come down on it, is, while I feel the frustration voiced by parents, and though my kids are younger than, uh, some of yours, I parent, I'm a parent of multiple athletes, and I do feel the frustration, but at the end of the day, it's not about me, it's about, we're, we're a school district, we, we, we educate kids, and we educate the whole child, and athletics and music are all part of this, and we're doing the best we can with that, and as a committee and as an administration, I would expect people to side with kids every day of the week and twice on Sundays, and I think that's what the administration has done in this case.
I, I think we've done it as a committee as well, too, so, so thank you for those questions, and being attentive to what we're hearing out there, um, I, I think as a district, we were courageous to begin the year in a hybrid learning model, and I think every day, we, we decided on every day for our, our, uh, our, our elementary grades that other school districts did not do, um, so we did some things that others didn't do, and they've done some things that we haven't done, so I think those are all very real choices that we've made without any blueprint to move forward at all, um, not, none of us really have that blueprint, because we can't predict the future is, so, I think we've made those choices, and we've made some difficult choices that are different than others, and for us, um, I do think our goal is to stabilize learning and student engagement, and work first and foremost in that regard, and then be attentive to the other pieces in our education that are connected to that as well, um, but we need to maintain a model for our students, um, and I finally wanted to close with saying, I know that I, in this school committee, have been very attentive to the education of our students, and I am further proud of our educational leaders, teaching staff, and all supporting departments for their far above and beyond efforts, I think that's really important for us to recognize that we've all, um, we're now almost at the half-year point, and we've already gone way above and beyond what was, what is any norm for any one of us, so, um, we're trying to do it every day and move forward every day, and our decisions today affect us in the future, so, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with our thinking and what we put into this.
Okay, the third update that I have is in technology, so, as you know, we're still waiting on our laptops for K and one, they have, for the most part, other than about fifty of them, have arrived at Wally Computers where we're having them all imaged, so that's taking place, um, now, and expect to be able to have those deployed by the end of the month, at the same time, we have extended the window, so it was, I think, the end of last week, as far as the protection plan, if parents wanted, at a discounted rate, a prorated rate, I should say, this year, for the protection plan, we're moving that out as far as February vacation, for, obviously for our K one, because they don't have the devices yet, but at the same time, for the devices two through twelve that have been deployed, we've already seen damage that's come in, um, from devices, and so some parents who had not purchased the protection plan are now wanting to purchase the protection plan, and we want to be able to offer that, because it really does make a huge difference to have that protection plan, and, um, so that's taking place, some of the damage that we're seeing is when, and I, and I think maybe Bill mentioned this at the last meeting, if you have your power cord plugged in across, and you trip over the cord and it yanks it right out of the machine, the damage that it can do, depending on what happens to that, could end up being like a three hundred and fifty dollar, um, ticket, if you will, so I'll, I'll let Bill give you a little bit more specifics.
Yeah, and, and I think part of the problem for us at this point, although we're kind of working ways around it, is that, as you can imagine, even parts are hard to come by right now, because obviously, everybody buying the computers, so, um, the computer that probably costs us close to four hundred, if that, the motherboard that has that plug-in, it does go, it's, it's virtually about three hundred and sixty-five dollars, almost the entire cost of, of, again, parts are worth more than the full piece, uh, when you buy it, so your car's worth more as individual parts than it is when you go to the lot and buy it, um, so I think that it, it's really critical that, that parents understand that this is, you know, possible to happen, um, if we're lucky and it is just a cord and we can replace the charger, that's great, um, but I think also, it's a learning experience, what the, the assumption will be here, and what we've heard from other districts that have gone one-to-one before this year, uh, is the first year is the real learning thing for, uh, families and kids, uh, asked how to take care of this equipment, um, you know, we're still seeing some, what we'll call intentional damage, you know, whether it's keys being popped off, or whether it's, you know, um, hitting the, the computer type thing, they, these are not bulletproof, they are computers still, um, and so I think it's, I think it's important for the parents to recognize that, and for the, uh, students to recognize that, again, this is a tool for them, this is their unit to use, they're not gonna get a new one every year, it's the one that they're gonna take with them for the next couple of years, um, so I really hope that they all start to appreciate the fact that they need to, to kind of manage their, uh, use of the devices and get the best they can out of it from the curriculum portfolio, but the, the protection plan, again, is, is a good measure, I know if, if my kids were still in school, I would definitely be getting it, so.
All right, and then the fourth and last update is just on planning for success, so we've talked here about how that's the new strategic plan, if you will, and we had intended in January to have a draft of that plan for you, we're not going to have a draft of that plan in January, it was really high hopes, and the way this year has gone, the, it's a twenty-seven-member team of educators since, you know, that are on that team, um, to be able to put that together, it, it's too important of a document to be able to do it well, so we anticipate by the end of the school year to be able to have that, but at the same time, what I think is critically important is the district strategy for improvement, which is the strategic objectives that we have and the focus areas, that's driving the plan, you just saw an excellent example this evening about how we are living by that, we're continuing to look at what are our opportunities, whether it's curriculum, whether it's instruction, as another example, under our budget, um, process, when we're really looking at, if we have needs, that we know that we need to do it within our budget going forward, then it's the decisions that we'll have to make, we're really looking at special education programming, what are some improvements we can make there, what that looks like as far as the vertical articulation between the programs that we have, if we're making adjustments in those programs, so, all of that work is taking place, but as far as that other document, in order to give you a document that's our blueprint, we want to do it well, and the availability of people on that team to do it at this point in time, it's a very different time, as you know, that we're living in.
Yeah, and I think you have to also understand, we've had a lot of disruption with our staff, with different people having to go out at different times during this, which are members of, you know, the committee as well, so, you know, um, Dr. Berdus has been doing, you know, a heck of a job trying to cover for everything that she needs to within the, the administrative offices, but, you know, this would be just one more piece that quite honestly is not the most important thing to us right now, the most important thing is what we're doing with the, the students and the, and the teachers in the classrooms, and, you know, again, trying to manage every day that's changing on her is, I, I have to say, watching from the side is just, it's incredible, it's not something that obviously would be a typical year, so, as much as we would like to have this program, and I'm a part of that team as well, you know, to get it done, it, it really, you know, has to march at a different pace, um, and we'll get it done as quickly as we can, once we have the staff to be able to, to complete it, so.
And in tandem with that, this on our curriculum review cycle is the technology curriculum review, when we're really looking at digital literacy and the computer science standards, that too, where we typically would have that for June, that needs to be put on pause, but it's gonna be a very different review, particularly with what we're living through going immediately one-to-one-
Right.
-looking at the technology integration within the standards and digital literacy, we're going to be looking at that so differently than we would have if we weren't living through what we're living through right now, because technology and the integration within the curriculum, it has definitely changed teaching forever as we go forward, so, I just wanted to bring that to the attention, the work is being done, but as far as the document itself, to be able to do it well, that blueprint itself, we need to, we need to kind of set that to the side, and to be able to continue to do the work that we're doing, but I, I just wanted to, since we had talked about that being January, bring that forward.
Any comments?
I appreciate you mentioning it, because, um, that's always the difficulty in, in keeping all the balls in the air, right, and, um, this is a very unique time, so, I'm glad you mentioned it, and, you know, we, we kind of still got our eye on the ball a little bit, but we just know it's- a little bit, but we just know it's not in our hands yet, right?
And, and I think the important piece is many districts that have gone through and developed the strategy for improvement, particularly if they have a new superintendent and the entry plan and all of the findings, that is their blueprint. That's it. We're trying to go and do more than that. So we have that blueprint. But again, we, we want to really dig in and go deeper and, and get into the weeds a little bit more.
No, I'm, I'm glad, I'm personally very glad that you decided to push it out, notwithstanding the scheduling difficulties, which I know are plenty, but just, I think you'll, you, you and your committee will have a different view on the back end of this pandemic and having gone through this year and talk about a stress test for any district. I think the learning, I think it's going to be a lot more valuable after this, to, to have a, to have a fresh look. So thank you for your discretion. That's great.
Good. Um, well, thank you for updating everything. Uh, you're all set?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question.
Next on the agenda is, oh, go ahead.
Um, I have a question regarding the COVID pool testing. Do you have any information when Foxborough will start doing that?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of what.
She was asking about the COVID pool testing? Sorry, I was just trying to help.
Go ahead.
You're good.
No, go ahead, go ahead. Say it again.
Go ahead, Kara.
Okay. Do you have any information on when Foxborough will start COVID pool testing?
As far as the pool testing, that's something if districts want to participate, it's voluntary. There was, um, it was just announced, there was a webinar today. I can, I know, um, I talked with Deputy Chief Tom Kinven about it and with our nurse leader, Jen Rosenberg. She participated in that. There's a lot for us to consider. It has staffing implications, it has budget implications. For example, they will give you all of the testing for no cost in the beginning, but after six weeks, then you assume a cost afterwards. Testing that's done is then followed up by a second test. You have to have a second test afterwards. So there's a lot to consider and that is, we have to decide by Friday, by giving our interest to the Department of Education if we are interested in pursuing that. I can tell you that the surrounding districts around us, we're all kind of thinking about that because of the implications it will have on staffing. Who, who's going to do that and assume that additional responsibility? And then at the same time, we are so very fortunate with the, um, our Foxborough, you know, Fire and Health Department and working with them. And the testing, when we've had situations with sports teams as an example and needed to have testing, they've done the testing for us and then we assume, you know, the, the cost there as part of the CARES Act, but we're able to get the testing done at the fire station and then be able to get the results back more quickly. And then at the same time, I'll take this opportunity, I was going to mention it under other matters, but all of our nurses were vaccinated today, thanks to the Foxborough Fire and with the ability for them, they've been trained to be able to administer the vaccine. So that's why they were vaccinated. So we were able to get them, they put nurses at the, kind of at the lower end of phase one. We know educators are phase two and that's February to April, but they put school nurses at the, um, in part of phase one, and so all of ours were vaccinated today.
Great. Can I follow up to Kiara's question, though? If, if you have to express interest by Friday, is that a commitment to do it or, so, I mean, if you, if you say no, you're out. If you express interest, you can, you know, focus in on the budgetary implications, the staffing implications and weigh the pros and cons for, you know, longer than five days?
That's my understanding because we, we have a lot of questions just based on hearing this right now.
And that's all good, but, you know, I just, it seems like making a commitment by Friday is asking a lot of districts.
No, we're looking at it as expressing interest. I think they're trying to dipstick and to see how many districts across. And, you know, your prevalence rate within schools and communities is very different across the state as well.
And even if we were to opt for that, that's still voluntary participation among the student population. Nobody would, it wouldn't be mandatory for students within the school.
I don't think we'd be able to.
No, no, I, I've been, I, that was my understanding. I just wanted to be clear.
So like you, we have lots of questions. So even, um, I haven't even had an opportunity to speak with Jen Rosenberg after the webinar that took place just today.
Yeah. Maybe we could talk about it a little more on, at our next meeting, if, if, you know, once you have a little bit more information and Jen has more information.
Because that's also a conversation with our association that we would have to have.
Absolutely.
That's fine. That's the next step.
Good question. Yes.
Thank you. Good question.
Thank you for the answer.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Amendment to Student Learning Times.
So just to go back and do a little bit of a, a review for anybody that may be watching and not familiar, I had sent out a communication during the vacation week that explained the emergency amendment the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had put forward and the board had voted, which has to do with a minimum number of synchronous hours and that being if you're in a hybrid learning model, that it would equal over a 10-day period an average of 35 hours. If you're in a fully remote, which we have to plan for that as well, if we were to find ourselves in a fully remote, that you would have an average of 40 hours that was live. So, you know, I'll just take the opportunity to kind of give an example of that. So if you had at the secondary level our grades and we had, if we, if we were fully remote, which we do not want to have take place, but if, and they had 50 hours of synchronous instruction and at the elementary level, because things are different based on need and, and level, and let's say that we had 30 hours of synchronous instruction at the elementary level, it is an average, so you would be at the 40. So I think that's important to remember. That was definitely an aha, as all of us have been talking about what these regulations mean. But what's most important as hybrid for us at this point, that's our learning model. And it's also important, I think, to remind people that when we were put to the task of coming up with three plans for the fall, there were not, it was completely left up to the local level. There were not any standards at all that, other than having three plans as far as the number of synchronous hours of, or instruction that you have. And synchronous learning, just as how that's defined, it's referred to learning that's directed by a teacher and that happens in real time with other students, such as during a live, um, whole class lesson or small group. So when we think about, if we're in person, that's, that's live instruction. At our secondary level, on Wednesdays, when our students are on live, online with their teachers, that is synchronous instruction. At the secondary level, over a 10-day period where it needs to be 35 hours, we are at 32. We needed to, we need to plan for an additional three hours of what that would look like. And then at the elementary level, we're at 30. So at the last school committee meeting, I mentioned that I would be writing the waiver and with your endorsement and support, you had the, the chair pen a letter to go in with that waiver to the Department of Education. And at 4:30 this afternoon, we received word that our waiver was approved. So very pleased that they recognized that we have really prioritized in-person instruction every day for our elementary students and the value that's there. So they have approved that. So we would not need to have any changes at this point in time at the elementary level. Of course, our goal is to have everyone back full in person and I can't wait for that day. And we're constantly talking about that and what that would look like and preparing for that. But we also know that we have some constraints and restrictions at this point in time. So the secondary level, we have been working with our association to be able to look what that would look like, that additional three hours over a 10-day period, and most importantly, what's best for students in that case. So we're close to coming up with a plan, hope to have that really more fleshed out by tomorrow, and then we'll communicate that with parents because that needs to take effect on next Tuesday of what that will look like. And then the Department of Ed, it'll be the following week that we'll have to submit what the hours look like and how it's changed from, in our case, the 32 hours to the 35 hours. So more information to come. Our teachers are collectively working with administration and myself and with our association to be able to meet that regulation. That's an emergency regulation through March 31st at this point in time, public comment period for the Department of Ed. They will have another final vote on that in February, but at this point in time, it is the regulation that we have to meet starting next week. But again, very pleased that we were awarded the waiver for elementary and to be recognized.
That, that's really great.
Yeah, that's, that's great. It's great for our parents, what, our parents are very pleased with where it is right now, I think, for what we've done. And I thought your letter was excellent that you submitted to the Department of Ed, so thank you.
Yeah. I, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased that not only do the elementary school teachers and staff, as well as the kids and the parents, they can breathe a sigh of relief, no change. I mean, that just alone is, is a lot. So, great job.
And, and one of the things I'll, I'll mention, I, I know that I had a number of parents reach out to me for a comment that was expressed afterwards in saying that, that I had said that our students are thriving. Just like to qualify, that that comment was in what parents at the elementary level had expressed, that in many cases, that they were thriving even knowing the environment that we're living in by having the opportunity to go to school every day. And I think that's really important, that our, our parent voices were heard and that the Department of Education also recognized how important it is to have students in five days a week. I wish we were able to do that at all levels.
Thank you. Good. Next on the agenda is continued discussion of the proposed FY '22 budget. Any of the members have any questions or further discussion?
No.
I, I don't have any questions. We are meeting next week over Zoom with the AdCom liaisons, Rob and I and, and Dr. Berdus and Mr. Yuknik, correct?
Correct.
I, I would note, though, that I haven't had anyone send me any comments or questions or call me or, you know, so I'm, you know, again, I, I don't, I don't have any further questions of my own. I think they were all answered very thoroughly at our last meeting and during our budget subcommittee meeting, but I, I, you know, just wanted to say I haven't heard from anybody who had any specific questions for me they wanted me to ask at this meeting.
No, you indulged several of my questions on the previous meeting, so I feel very up to speed.
Great. Okay. Good. All set?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Thanks for, we've had our options and we've had our time on this, so that puts us in a good spot and we move ahead.
Okay.
Next is the 2021-22 school calendar discussion.
So at this time of year, we're looking forward to the next school year. This year probably more so than any other.
Well, we don't know yet, right?
We're still looking forward to having all students back before the end of the school year, but at the same time, looking at the 21-22 school year. And the discussion here before you this evening is you have two different calendars in front of you. You have our traditional calendar, which is starting after Labor Day, which is on the blue page that you have. So I'll just point out that that traditional calendar, we have, um, starting with Labor Day where it falls, with a new national holiday that takes place on June 19th, which is National Independence Day, which recognizes, it celebrates the end of slavery. So that holiday would fall within, we have to, by state law, built in five snow days. We also know that snow days will not be as they could be this year as remote learning days. That, that's only for this school year if we were to use remote learning days on snow days. So that would put the last day of school with those five days built in at June 27th, which is quite late. And that also, I can share with you that through our discussions, I'll just go ahead and, and put it out there, from the administration level and then in working with the Foxborough Education Association, that the discussion is, that's really not ideal by having that late in June. It's more important for us, instructionally, for students to have them earlier in the year. We also know from parents, camps, if they're attending different camps, they, excuse me, begin that last week of June. So from an instructional standpoint, from a family standpoint, it, it makes it harder to be there in June and the attentiveness of students at the end of June is not what it is in the beginning of September, I'll just say.
And the other, the other part of that is the MCAS testing and stuff like that. We're still going to be tested on the curriculum. Obviously, if we don't get to it because we're being pushed further into the year, the, the dates are still going to stay the same, likely with the MCAS, so.
AP, Advanced Placement, all of those dates are set.
All those testing stay the same, so you potentially lose a week of what the, the students should have.
The other option that you have before you is to do what we would have done this year, which is to start before Labor Day, which would have been September 1st for students if we didn't have the changes that we had based on COVID. And next year, if we were to start before Labor Day, it would be an August 31st date instead of a September 1st start date for students. They would still have the four-day weekends, but it would allow you to start a little bit earlier and then the date in June would obviously be backed up and you would end with the last date on June 22nd if you had five snow days that are there. So bring this up for discussion. It's not something that you have to vote on this evening just to present the two options and then we could come back at the next school committee meeting and vote on the calendar because that is voted by, by you as a body, but wanted to bring it forth. What are the two options? What does it look like in the ramifications for both and for discussion?
Right. The, in addition to the sound logic that you and Bill had both mentioned, I have an additional reason for favoring the earlier start in having that four-day Labor Day weekend is, at least in my experience, I think it's better for student transition into the year. And there's sometimes enrollment things shake out and sometimes student anxieties come to the fore and it gives, uh, parents and students, I think, a more, an easier run into the year than going for four solid weeks right after Labor Day. At least that's what I've seen in my experience.
I would agree.
So.
I, I agree with what Brent just said and I think that, when we first debated this, it wasn't the first time, the first time we debated this since I've been on the committee was 2014, 2015 school year. And at, until this year, that was probably the most controversial subject, the most, I, I know laugh, but it's the truth. I got more phone calls about pre-Labor Day start, post-Labor Day start, but we've done it, we did it that, that year and we've done it since then. And I think, I think people have grown accustomed, more accustomed to it and actually have found it to be very beneficial for the reasons that Brent just said and for all the other reasons, the additional time for our students who are in AP classes and all, all of the above. I think we all just pray they can go back on time, full-on, in-person next fall, so.
They're, they're going to be excited to be back full in-person on the first day of school.
I, I think the trend has been to start before Labor Day and, you know, we, we really stuck with our traditions and I still, you know, if, if Labor Day is September 1st and we're starting on September 2nd, then I'm still kind of there on that. But when it's late, I think there's definitely a benefit to getting the kids back in school, you know, end of August, early September. Just my opinion. But, you know, I, I would suggest we wait until our next meeting so that if anyone does want to discuss this with us or make their opinions known, they can.
No, I appreciate that.
I was just going to say, it's, it's so hard to picture this. I don't know if I'm the only one, but it, you know, you just start, you kind of think of like, well, what's, what is summer going to look like?
I know.
What is, you know, vacations, planning for, you know, are we actually, are people actually going to be able to get away? Is that going to, but those are some of those things that I think about and there's no answers to that. So should it be considered or not? I don't know. But I definitely, I don't think that delaying is going to be helpful in overall. That's just one of my gut reactions, but yeah, I want to think about it some more. That's just one of my gut reactions, but yeah, I want to think about it some more.
Okay.
Thank you for the, the information about, you know, the, the deadlines and all that kind of stuff like that, that helps.
I think the other thing that, and it doesn't impact every kid, but it impacts a number of them, is that the, it's not like the last two weeks of, of summer are sacred as far as school, no school, because athletics start, band starts, you know, there's a whole myriad of things that are starting anyway. So it's not like what we used to think about, well, you don't really do anything, because it's, it's really, they do start. So for many of the kids, it's not really an option, whether they're going to have to be around anyway, so.
Did you, you did mention that you've had preliminary discussions with the FEA as well?
They are in favor, when they've had discussions, they're in favor of the earlier start.
Great, that's what I thought.
And mentioned many of the things that we've mentioned, as, as well as what Brent has mentioned as well. And, and just two from the ease-in, and, you know, re-entry can be tough from the year. And if you're able to come in with three days and really the relationship building with students and to build that class, you know, environment, and it, it allows you to do that, have a long weekend, and then come back and be ready.
Can't agree more.
It's also something to think about is, God forbid, we don't, we end the year as hybrid, meaning we don't ever have the kids back in full time. That, you know, re-entry, I can see that there's going to be some anxieties that can crop up. So having two shorter weeks to kind of ease yourself, you know, ease everyone into it, would probably be helpful. Trying to think ahead, all possibilities.
And we can't forget of snow days either. That's a big deal, too.
It is.
27th of June is a very, very, very late June date. Very extreme, extremely late.
It's too hot, it's too hot, it's a month after MCAS.
And with the earlier start, the August 31st start, the, the last day would be June 14th, and then with the snow days, the 22nd.
Exactly, exactly.
And, you know, I know Diana Myers-Pacla, she'll always bring up, too, I can hear her, that when we think about Advanced Placement testing, they're set. And so schools in the South or anywhere all over the country, those dates are set. So they are ready, as she'll say, they've already had a couple of weeks extra because they're starting in mid-August, where we're not starting until a couple of weeks later. So prolonging it another additional week is, from, from our student perspective. I know that's just the high school, but again, it's another factor to consider.
Very much so. So we'll, we'll bring this up again next meeting?
Yes, please.
Everyone, good? Great, thank you. Wow, we've made it to donations, acceptance of donations.
You got us back on track, too.
Yeah, look at this. It's amazing.
So this donation from Meditech, once they moved to Foxborough, and then we were the recipient of this very generous donation. We were really excited two years ago when this happened. And in the last two years, we've received a donation of $10,000 from them. And it is slated for technology and technology instruction. And so as an example, in our first year of receiving this, the Vernier Probes and Science is what we had used that money for, and it provided another great technology tool, bless you. And then last year for Project Lead the Way. And this year, not only are we receiving the donation again, but it was increased to $15,000. So we're just so appreciative and grateful for this, to be able to put towards technology and technology instruction. And then another part of it is we present to the Meditech Board what we're spending that money on and the impact that it's had. So that's always exciting, too, the last two years when we've been able to go and talk about what they were able to do for our students as a result of this donation.
That's awesome. This is great. Any questions from anyone?
No, just thank you, just gratitude.
Yep.
Motion?
Motion from?
I move to accept with extreme gratitude the Meditech donation of $15,000.
Seconded.
Seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? All in favor of accepting the $15,000 donation from Meditech? Five hands, five zero, thank you very much. As Brent said, with gratitude, and also thanks for demonstrating to them what their donation is. That's a big deal, too, to say not only thank you with gratitude, but here's what it looks like. So thank you very much for doing that. And other matters?
Just quickly, so the IT revolving account that we had discussed and asked to be put off, I've been in conversations with Senator Feeney and State Rep Barrows, and the end result, and what seems to be the quickest and the simplest way to resolve this is that I will put forward a, with your support, a article at town meeting to create the IT revolving account, as there is not one that's under state statute currently specifically for that. But we do have the ability to have our own revolving accounts. We have an ambulance revolving account, recreation revolving account. There are a number of different revolving accounts that aren't by state statute in town, and we have that ability to do that. So I've already asked Bill Keegan to kind of put a placeholder on the next town meeting warrant to allow us to do that, and that will then put us in the position that, again, the funds that we're collecting, we, we can use towards the repairs and replacements of computers.
Brett? Bill, I'm very grateful for your proactive leadership on this and for, as ever, doing your due diligence and chasing down all the people that we, we talked to in these cases. So thank you for being so thorough and on top of this. And I just think it's a great idea for our district and the town.
Bill, do you need any vote from us to move it to the town meeting? Do you need any vote of support?
No, I think I just need your, I just need your, you know, consensus, and that's fine.
Yep.
Okay, so the peers, I, what do you think? I think we're all nodding in agreement and thanking you for your time in pushing it forward. Thank you. Other matters? Dr. Barros, would you like to start?
Sure. So elementary parents would have received an email today about an upcoming workshop that is inviting them to attend on remote learning and remote friendships, helping your child manage academic and social challenges during COVID. So Dr. Larry Epstein is a psychologist that has worked with our district in many capacities, whether it's in problem solving with particular student cases or through professional development. And he's going to offer this workshop for our Borough Igo and Taylor families that will take place on Wednesday, January 27th at 6:00 PM. Obviously, it's virtual. And once they register, that link will be shared. And as always, we are grateful to Foxborough Cable Access to be able to help us, be able to provide that to parents. And then at the middle school level, we're going to be holding a virtual workshop that is supported by the Ahern PAC. So we're really grateful for the PAC supporting this workshop that's going to be supporting your child during hybrid and remote learning. And this workshop will, you can choose, trying to be flexible with parent schedules, whether it's a morning, a noon time, or an evening. So there are hour-and-a-half workshops, like 9:00 to 10:30, 12:00 to 1:30, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And those are actually the next day, on Thursday evening, or that noon or morning slot. And parents, once they register, will then receive the link for those workshops. And that's going to be presented by Maureen Gilman, and that's through Seaside Educational Consultants. And we've been, Karen and I have been meeting with the consultants and talking about what our needs are and based on what our families said on that survey that we presented here. So both of these opportunities are really coming from what we heard from our families and are being designed that way, to be able to provide a resource to them and an opportunity to participate in the virtual workshops for both. So those were sent out by email. I know the elementary one went out. If middle school didn't, it will be going out very soon. We were just finalizing the flyer for that this afternoon and really excited to be able to offer that and appreciative of the support to be able to offer those. So, you know, other things that are going on, the acts of kindness and the different activities at elementary, it's just been really great to see, particularly in the environment we're living in right now and what we've seen in the last week in our country. And our teachers are just doing a, a great job of really, they, they always have teachable moments. And to be able to have those conversations at a developmentally appropriate level is really important. And I just, you know, hats off to our teachers for what they do every day in classrooms and be able to meet students' needs. And again, if we have any parents that are looking for additional resources, we have those for Talking With Children on our websites. And just like to, you know, make mention of that as well, too, because we know that this is already a very difficult year. And based on what we have witnessed in the, in the last week, it, it just continues to show the challenges that are presented to us on a, on a, on a daily basis, and schools, too.
Thank you, well said. Michelle, any other other?
No.
Brett? Rob?
No.
I have none. Tina?
Thank you. So here we are, it's mid-January, and it's kind of the time of year people start thinking about pulling papers for the local election. And I just wanted to put out there that I don't plan to run for a fourth term on the school committee. It's been a great honor and privilege to be a part of this committee, to work with all of you and, and all of your predecessors on the committee for the last nine years and, and three years on the advisory committee before that. And I learned from some really great people on that committee as well. But I think it's time for me to figure out what my next chapter is. And I'm a believer in term limits, including for myself. So I just wanted to put it out there so people can be thinking about, you know, whether they might be interested in running in May. Thank you. And I'm still here until, you know, the end of April.
You better be.
Yeah, you are, yeah, you are.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for all your nine years of service in school committee and the three before that as well, too. You've been a great voice for so many people, students, parents, community as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
And you're not going anywhere yet.
Yeah, she's still with us, so.
I'll still be here.
Great, I think we're all good. Everyone's covered other other. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Tina?
Second.
Seconded by Brent. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone, good night. Thank you for signing in.
Thank you.